Series, that would be the Aptos Chamber of Commerce, Scotts Valley Chamber of Commerce, Paharo Valley Chamber of Commerce, Santa Cruz County Chamber of Commerce, the Association of Faith Communities, Community Bridges, County Park Friends, Live Oak Cradle to Career, Santa Cruz Community Health Centers, Santa Cruz County Business Council, Santa Cruz Museum of Art and History, Santa Cruz Indivisible, Santa Cruz Policy, and finally, Santa Cruz Works. Thank you all. We are not going to have Spanish translation tonight. Apologies for that. First off, we're going to have candidate introductions. Our candidates in this race are Kristen Peterson, Anthony Rovai, Will Rising, and Margo Kaiser. Will Rising is not joining us tonight, but he, yeah, he's chose not to participate in this forum. All these, these candidates will be on the ballot. Voters will get to choose two of these candidates. So candidates, when I call on you, please say your name and just why you're running for city council. You'll have 90 seconds. Jace will keep time and the timer will appear in his, on Jace's screen. So first, let's start with Kristen Peterson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristen Peterson. I am the incumbent on Capitola City Council and this year's mayor. Since my election to Capitola City Council in 2016, I have had the honor and the privilege to engage in many local, regional, and statewide initiatives to benefit the residents of Capitola. I'm running this year because I want to continue that work. In my first four years, I added youth seats to our city's advisory bodies, chaired committees to address coastal resilience, and village enhancement, and supported residents and business owners impacted by COVID-19. I fundraised for our Capitola Branch Library, pushed for the development of a new hotel as part of our Capitola Mall redevelopment, rather than in our quaint Capitola Village. I worked to secure funding for a dedicated children's fund and raised money for local community groups. I've also represented the city of Capitola on multiple regional and state committees, including the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, where I currently serve as the vice president, the Central Coast Housing Working Group, and the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary Advisory Committee. I've also served for the last two years on the League of California Cities Community Services Policy Committee. My family is called Capitola Home for four generations, and it's been an honor to represent the residents of Capitola on our city council for these past four years. I'm eager to finish what we've started in my first term and consider innovative ways of moving into the next four years.
Thank you, Kristen. We'll move to Anthony Rovai.
Hi, I'm Anthony Rovai. I was born and raised in California. I've been a resident of San Cruz County since 1975. And some of the things I enjoy doing around here are surfing, hiking, mountain biking. I moved from Aptos to Capitola in 1997, and I've been living here and working in Capitola since then. During my time here, I've remodeled multiple homes and have actually built homes from the ground up, my own primary residence, and got to know the team down at the Capitola Building Department and saw how they worked and got more insight of how that all worked. The reason I actually am running for city council is I have a financial planning background, a real estate background, and insurance background, and with all the challenges we are coming into after COVID, I really think that my skill set would greatly enhance the city council. I've been reaching out to all the former council members and planning people and gaining a lot of insight into what's going on in the city, and I really enjoy pursuing to be a council member and supporting this great city of Capitola.
Terrific. Thank you, Anthony. Moving on, just please say your name and why you're running for city council. Margo Kaiser.
Hey, guys. Welcome. As you just said, my name is Margo Kaiser. I have had the privilege of working in the Capitola Village for the last 15-plus years. My husband and I have lived here for just over 13 years. While working tirelessly throughout a couple handful of restaurants in the village, I obtained my Bachelor of Science of Nutrition from San Jose State University, along with my personal training certificate through NASN. And so for like the last five years or so, I've been building my own personal training business and nutritional counseling business, and I've been able to work closely with a lot of Capitola locals. And along with being in the restaurant scene too, I've been able to make really good connections with people, along with handling some situations that may not be the most calm, if you might say. And so basically, COVID came along and it really did ignite in me how I can get involved locally, how I can speak for the community, and how I can be a part of Capitola's rebuild after COVID. You know, we've been through a quite tumultuous time, and what better thing to say than you've helped this quaint, awesome town get back to where it was and maybe even better. Thanks.
Fantastic. Will Rising, please introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone. My name is Will Rising. I see some familiar faces on here, so good to see you, especially Margo, as you see me on the patron side. Like very much, I was born and raised, well, born in Mountain View, but raised in Capitola, lived here for most of my life. And, you know, very similarly, you know, growing up here, well, some of my first jobs were down in Capitola, parking cars in the parking lot across from some of the restaurants down there. Then in the restaurants, surfed my first wave at Capitola Jetty. Have just been a big, big, you know, Capitola has always been home. Moved away to San Francisco to pursue my career, you know, for about seven or eight years, and then came back, had a son, and live here now, and am a homeowner now, a father now, a small business owner now. A lot of different perspectives in this town, and I care about it very much. So, you know, very similarly, as soon as COVID happened, especially as a father, a homeowner, and a business owner, and somebody that's working for a large company as well, you start to get really concerned about some of the things, how it's going to impact all of our daily lives, and really just wanting to have more visibility into how the city and local government can help, and then realizing, you know, I'd really like to be a part of that. And then similar to what Anthony was saying, when I came in is, you know, I have a pretty unique skill set, right? I've, I'm definitely, you know, a local and have been, had the benefit of being able to live here and enjoy all of that, but also from a career perspective, I've had kind of a unique path where, you know, I went through, put myself through college.
Time for you.
Oh, there we go. That's probably going to happen to me a lot. Anyway, so want to get more involved and really eager to participate.
Great. Yeah, we asked, just you keep an eye on the time, 90 seconds for all the questions. And thanks for joining us, too.
You bet. Yeah.
Okay, great. First question, so these questions came from Santa Cruz local readers and listeners. We're going to page, paste each question in the chat for our audience. The chat's at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon marked chat if you don't have it open. We just asked that the candidates be respectful in their responses of each other. At the same time, we want you guys to differentiate yourselves from the other candidates so that voters have a clear idea of the differences between you two, all of you. So I'll call on each candidate. You'll have 90 seconds. First question, "There are some plans in concept for the Capitola Mall redevelopment. The plans call for more than 200 housing units along with a retail overhaul. What are your goals and concerns, if any, for that development? What should the city council push for?" Kristen Peterson.
All right. Thank you so much. That's a great question, because a lot of the things that are happening in Capitola now and that will happen in the next four years are going to revolve around that mall. So, or what is now a mall and will become what is the working title is Capitola Town Square. I'm excited about the possibility for new housing at that location. We're looking at potentially 300 to 400 housing units. Some of them, we are asking, remain within the affordable, affordable housing aspect of things, and that's really going to help us meet our revenue numbers. The amount of housing that is required by our Regional Housing Needs Assessment is set by Ambac. I'm excited about the housing. I'm excited about the opportunity for jobs that will come to that area once it's redeveloped. I'm excited for the possibility to make 41st Avenue more walkable in the Capitola side of 41st Avenue. Additionally, as I mentioned in my introduction, when the owners of the mall, Merlon Guyer, came to us with the plan, myself and several other council members requested that they could return to us with additional plans that will include a hotel. Because as you know, there was suggestions of a hotel down in the village, and there was concerns about the scale and scope of that. And so putting that up on 41st, I think, would be more appropriate. So I'm really looking forward to the opportunities that this is going to provide our city. And of course, all the things that we need to consider, traffic, water, those are all things that we're going to be studying and taking into consideration in the coming years.
Great. Okay, the question again, "What are your goals and concerns, if any, for Capitola Mall redevelopment?" Margo Kaiser.
Thank you. So this has been totally a hot topic ever since the new owners took it over, and I think it's super exciting. I think we have a big chance here to bring in a lot more jobs and, as Kristen was saying, some more affordable housing, which we all know has been a big issue within our county. I really like the aspect of having another destination within Capitola. I mean, the village is amazing. I can walk to the village, but at this point, it'd be so cool to be able to walk to 41st and have some mixed use and outdoor dining, shopping, things like that, almost more of like a Santana Row kind of vibe, and bring in more people and more sales tax. And yeah, I think that the hotel, you know, not a super huge hotel, but something that will bring in some more TOT tax for Capitola that will definitely help with rebuild of our budget and things like that. And yes, of course, traffic's going to be a concern. Is it going to be a thoroughfare? How is that going to affect neighboring people? But perhaps having something that is walkable would mean that people are going to drive less, people will ride their bikes, things like that. So it's super exciting. I'm looking forward to working with any team that's part of it and making, making the best options happen. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Anthony Rovai.
Sorry about that. Had to unmute. So the, you know, the first plan that they put through, it did not represent a good balance between, you know, smart commercial and the correct amount of housing and aesthetics. And I think that's something that we really have to focus on is the aesthetics of what's going to go in there. I mean, that property could be the pinnacle of Capitola up there. I mean, it has the potential, but it also has, if it's not done right, to be an absolute disaster for our city. So what I'm hoping to see them come back with, I really do like the idea of having a hotel up there to generate the TOT tax. As Margo said, we really need that tax revenue to rebuild. And then I'd like to see something that was scalable up there. And once again, the Santana Row kind of comes to mind, or just almost like duplicating, you know, the village up here and making a wonderful mixed use, shops on the first floor, maybe office on the second floor and/or housing second and third floor if it goes to three stories. It'd be a wonderful asset to Capitola, and it'd also be a great revenue stream for Capitola in the future.
Great. Same question, Will Rising.
Yeah, very similar. So concerns and thoughts, I think immediately, thinking with COVID and thinking post-COVID, there's a few things, you know, part of the, part of the concerns that got me here are things about like childcare, small business, the arts. What I would really love to see, and I know plans are established, but is finding a way where we can incorporate, you know, a very, very easy user experience for some of the businesses to be able to make money easier, right? Like we noticed outside dining, everything outside is much more comfortable. Inside dining is less comfortable. So finding ways to incorporate that design or structure or the flow where it can facilitate some of the new kind of channels for, for small business post-COVID. So that goes along with, one of the other things that's top of mind for me, which is, you know, incorporating, incorporating how we, how we can easily have the arts, musicians, people be able to play. I mean, if I'm dreaming about this and thinking about this in a perfect way, it's, there's going to be, you know, of course, we need the business. It's going to be wonderful to have a new place to go. All of the things everyone's mentioned about housing are, you know, extremely important and top of mind, but I think the actual experience of it and having the businesses be able to flourish, having it be able to support, it should be, should be kind of accommodating, maybe a new way of post-COVID life, which would include open-air seating, a lot of, you know, flexibility in terms of how people can come and purchase and go. And then, as I was mentioning before, being able to incorporate kind of the arts, the entertainment, the mental health perspective things.
Great. Time. Thank you.
Getting better.
Very good. Okay, we're moving on to our lightning round. We're going to ask some yes or no questions. Please raise your hand if the statement applies to you, if it's a yes. So some of these ideas came from earlier interviews with the candidates. Okay, you guys ready? Question one, raise your hand if you are a renter. Okay, and I see, and I'll call the names. I see Kristen Peterson. That's it. Question two, raise your hand if you are a landlord. I see no hands. Okay. Question three, from a Santa Cruz local reader, "Raise your hand if you would allow some Capitola areas that are zoned for single-family homes to be rezoned to allow duplexes." See, Will Rising, Kristen Peterson. Very good. Okay, question four, "Raise your hand if you would allow some Capitola areas that are zoned for single-family homes to be rezoned to allow for fourplexes." Will Rising, Kristen Peterson. Got it. All right. Number five, and our last question of the lightning round. "To entice developers to build more rental housing, Capitola city staff recently suggested removing the city's inclusionary law for rental units. That law requires housing projects of a certain size to offer 15% of those housing units to people with low incomes. Raise your hand if you support the removal of the city's inclusionary laws for rentals." Will Rising, Kristen Peterson. There you go. Okay, great. That concludes our lightning round. Thank you for that. All right, moving on to question, our question two, we're going to have about three or four more questions. "Many Capitola residents and voters we interviewed said they felt isolated during the pandemic, especially senior citizens. Given the city's limited budget, what will you do to expand the city's programs and services for seniors?" I will start with Anthony Rovai.
I mean, that's kind of a really a loaded question in a time when the city doesn't even have enough budget to, you know, maintain the current streets or anything. But with that being said, I'd like to see that programs maybe at Jade Street or at the, at the senior centers, those type of programs where we can get seniors together. I don't know when COVID will allow us to do that. But, you know, host things for seniors to get together and go around and maybe even get this, you know, schools. When my son went to school, they actually visited some of the senior housing around there. And that was kind of a wonderful thing. The seniors loved it. The kids got to get out and talk with the folks and learn stuff about, you know, how life was back, you know, 50 years ago. So just do an outreach within the neighborhoods and make sure that neighbors are connected. Nextdoor works out very well as a platform. I've seen a lot of seniors be able to reach out and ask for help, and it's wonderful to see how many people step up to, to help our seniors. So I fully support that platform and maybe making it more accessible for seniors. Let them know that it's even there, because I don't think a lot of people know. I mean, it's like Zoom. It's another thing, so.
Thank you for that. Same question, Kristen Peterson.
Sure, thank you. And I'm going to take a couple seconds of my time to apologize for my fidgeting and let everyone know I have a six-month-old puppy that is not respecting the importance of this forum right now. So my apologies. It's understandable that people are feeling isolated. I think a lot of us are feeling isolated right now, especially with having to be at home quite often or at least not able to visit with some of our family members, our, you know, our grandparents, our relatives, our friends, without putting them at risk. So it's understandable that people are feeling isolated right now. Again, with the budget being what it is, this is a really difficult question to answer. I will say that the city's done really well so far in transitioning some of our recreation programs to virtual and supporting, this isn't for seniors, but supporting things like our out-of-school time program and make sure that there's social distancing. So I think that we can continue to move forward in, really, we could do some community outreach to our seniors to see what is it that you need and how can we provide that? If virtual classes aren't working, then what would? And how can we do that in a safe way? If we need to provide PPE, Personal Protective Equipment, would we have the opportunity to do social distancing? We recently just did a review of allowing commercial businesses to use our parks for different, you know, outdoor workouts or classes. So I think that those are the kind of things that we can continue to explore to support our seniors and all of our residents who are feeling isolated right now.
Thank you. Will Rising.
Thank you. I'm going to take a little bit of time. I apologize. I have a little bit of a childcare snafu, so I got a four-and-a-half-year-old running around the back throwing dice everywhere. A little distracting, and I'll try not to let it too disrupt. But I think along the same lines of, you know, what Kristen was saying, I feel like there's a lot of, well, one, it's communicating, or getting the understanding of what the needs are. Everyone is feeling isolated, you know. I was raised by my grandparents and I, you know, they're unfortunately, they're gone by now, but that have, I've had, I have friends that are in their senior community and, and getting out and about, just getting out and about even for like a drive and kind of getting to see, see life and see air for the ones that have been so scared, is truly, truly an impactful, positive experience. So I think it's understanding what, doing some outreach to understand what the appetite would be and what people would be willing to do, but then really leveraging some of the resources that we have that are being unused right now. Anthony mentioned Jade Street, you know, I think that's a park. There's that community center there that you can rent out by the hour. I'm not sure what the impact or, you know, how hard it is to rent things out now, but making all of the resources that might be available for just a safe, socially-distanced experience about getting outside, I think would even have an impact on some of the seniors. Now, some of the folks that are not seniors with other families, I think there's other things that we can be doing too. Similarly with, you know, having the, that can also stimulate local business, which is maybe having a local tonight where it's reinforced of where, you know, people are going to be safe and be out and about, but it's something that where locals can get out and they're going to feel good about doing it and potentially help stimulate some local business as well.
Time. Great. Margo Kaiser.
Thanks. So yeah, this is a really sort of tough thing to handle seeing as how we have had a lot of budget cuts. COVID has affected that population more greatly. Not only are they at higher risk, but less mobility and, and less, less ways to be active and get outside without being in contact with other people. So as far as the budget goes, I think that this might be something that we have to look into more of a volunteer measure. Or maybe we can bring back pen pals and get younger children in school who, you know, are going to maybe explain how to use Zoom to the person via a letter or something cool, you know, and get some connections going on through community that may not be there otherwise, because we're all kind of behind these screens. But again, as other people have said, we do need to identify what is wanted, what is needed, how we can do it safely, is outdoors even safe for this population that may really have to even take extra precaution when it comes to health? So, you know, family members, if they're around and local, that's going to be a huge help. Volunteering, making different connections with younger people and making some more like after-school type of things happening along with seniors, that could be something too that is sort of a win-win for everybody. But again, it's a tough one. We're in a tough budget and a tough pandemic. Thanks.
Great. Great. Next question. "Many local businesses are still struggling during the pandemic. What more can be done to support local businesses? What new plans will you push for in a year on the city council?" And I'll call on Margo Kaiser.
Yeah, so I'm also a small business as myself, and I too have had to learn how to navigate personal training and counseling, nutrition, guidance with people. So a lot of it has been virtual, a lot of it has been distanced. The other thing that I started doing, I started hosting donation-based workouts weekly throughout the pandemic, where either the donations that I received from the people that took the workout either went to donating to people that were higher impact of COVID or small businesses that were down in the village, Caruso's, the wine bar, Zandi Swimwear. I've donated a lot of those proceeds to places like that in the form of a gift card, and then I do a giveaway. So this is where social media comes into a huge play. I think the small businesses need to start using that as a free outlet, as a way to get more growth. We are a small town and, you know, this, we are in shelter-in-place, so what better thing to do than do a giveaway or do an event? And we can walk down, now everybody's doing curbside or pickup or anything like that. It's, you're going to have to get the creative juices going so, and stay motivated through this time, because we don't know where this is going to lead us in the next few months. And in support, shop local. Make it a pact with your family this year. Shop local, no Amazon, no nothing like that. Thanks.
The question again, "What more can be done to support local businesses? What new plans will you push in a year, in your first year on city council?" Will Rising.
Um, I want to touch on some things Margo said. I think leveraging social media. I'm a small business owner and run two kind of small businesses. And one of the things that I've realized now, it's about awareness. There's a lot of things that we rely on from a convenience perspective as consumers that, that just come hand-in-hand like Amazon, but that's not necessary. There's ways we can leverage local business and local businesses to kind of help each other to do that. So I think finding those combinations, you know, like for example, food, local delivery. I have a hot sauce, so I'm putting my hot sauce in a lot of the local restaurants and stores and at a discount to try and drive, you know, drive business there and help some traffic come in that way. So, you know, the things that come to mind for me is awareness from the local businesses on how they can leverage each other. The best and most effective way to do that is through social media. This is my son. I'm holding him real quick. And, and, you know, through leveraging social media, definitely finding ways businesses can help each other do that and awareness. And I think as a city, I mean, there's, we talked about kind of sidewalk things, and I think about like farmers' markets where businesses can kind of do that. I think that's a very, very good way to have more of those to help kind of stimulate local business as well. And I'm going to stop early just to deal with this quick daddy issue real quick.
Very good. Anthony Rovai.
Wow. So, I mean, what we can do is really going to be determined by what is going on at the state level, what, what kind of mandates are coming down? What can we do? As everybody else has said, yes, social media is super important. And just running this campaign, I met with a whole bunch of people. I'm using a local, local printers for my signs. That's what you can do, is you just shop local. You know, I have my office here in Capitola. I've been helping people budget their money as best they can. I, you know, use all my tactics to help stretch their budget by finding them the correct insurance for them at the lowest, you know, option. And I've been doing a whole bunch of financing for people to lower their, their monthly bills on their mortgage. So, I mean, you just have to, you know, help people. I mean, that's one of the reasons I'm running is to help, right? You know, think outside of the box. What do we need? We need solutions to this kind of stuff. And it's not all in our control. We do have, you know, the state sending down different instructions, sometimes daily, you know, depending on, my son works down at a restaurant and he doesn't know what he can do or can't do depending on what the newest, latest guidelines are. So I'd like to see if we could somehow, you know, get on a real, a simple plan for businesses to know what they need to do.
Thank you. All right. Kristen Peterson.
Sure. So when the pandemic first hit, maybe five weeks in, I was contacted by several members of the BIA, which is short for the Business Improvement Area, the Village and More from Business Improvement Area. And they said, "We need to hear from you more. We need help. What can you tell us? How can we, how can we make this easier?" They told us that they needed outdoor dining. The council made that happen. We also waived the permitting fees for outdoor dining and permanent takeout windows. We now have businesses asking if they will be able to continue that through the end of the year. I support that, and if I'm reelected, I will continue to support that for as long as it is feasible and we can consider other ways to address the weather impacts that we're sure to have coming this winter. In speaking with the BIA, we also, I worked with our city- In speaking with the BIA, we also, I worked with our city staff to develop a mayor's economic recovery task force that has several of the business owners that come together to discuss ways that they feel they can be supported by the city. Additionally, the business owners are supported through their percentage of our TOT taxes that go directly to the BIA for them to choose how they will spend that money. And we continue to facilitate conversations with them on how we can continue to support them. I know the county has a grant program right now. The city is working on a forgivable loan program that was a little more complicated than we thought it would be, but I'm committed to continuing to support the businesses however I can.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Many voters that we talked to said they need help with childcare. Capitola recently partnered with SoCal Union Elementary School District and the County of Santa Cruz for a city-subsidized childcare and homework help program. Given the city's limited budget, what programs or services will you push for related to childcare? And how will they be funded? We'll start with Kristen Peterson.
Sure. So as previously mentioned, we currently have an out-of-school time program run by the city. And I would push to keep that for as long as necessary, even past COVID times, if that is the case, whenever that may be. You know, in addition to that, I'd say that we have a great Parks and Rec program that are running a lot of these out-of-school time programs right now. And I think that before we got into COVID, we were talking about, or we had started, an after-school care program, which was really, I would like to say, kind of pushed forward by our Vice Mayor, Yvette Brooks. And so I've got to give her the benefit for that. And additionally, part of our transient occupancy tax, our TOT funding, goes directly into a dedicated children's fund. And so as that funding comes in, we can continue to look at how we can put that money towards childcare programs. Again, credit to Vice Mayor Brooks, who came up with the idea to waive licensing fees for people that want to open in-home daycares. So there are things that have already started and then were kind of disrupted by COVID. There's things that we hadn't considered that were created out of necessity because of COVID. And again, as we move into the next four years, you know, I heard someone say today that the idea of that's the way we've always done it, or business as usual, that's dead now. That's never going to be that way again. And so in the next four years, we can look at the funding we have, the things we've done, and the things we want to do in order to address this need of childcare.
Thank you. Will Rising.
Yes, great question. And so, and I was happy to see, and kind of looking through, I saw that that program, you guys have an article about that program being released. And that's really, really good news. And I think support that as long as possible. The biggest challenge right now, or it, you know, still is and was when this happened, is kids need kids and parents really need kids to have something to do and be stimulated during the day in order to keep balance and be able to do what they need to do in order to, you know, keep the household up and running. And, you know, this is near and dear to my heart. I ended up turning kind of one of the small businesses I have, we call it Van Camp, and it's a makeshift slash school activity program to where we go out, pick up kids from the house, bring them back to a certain spot, do kind of scholastic education halfway through the day. And then the second half of the day is done doing outside activities like beach cleanup, nature hikes, go to the park, sports, and it's all within a, oh my God, I have a visitor at my house. How funny. It's all between, all, you know, motivated by wanting to have the kids have some stimulation in a safe environment. It's within an, you know, eight-to-10-person pod and to do that. And it's, you know, it's been kind of a, it's been interesting to see how that evolves. But to what Kristen just said, it's, things are not going to be the same, right? You have homeschooling. You have these Zoom classes that are making everyone really, really frustrated. And it's really hard, but at the end of the day, the kids need kids. Sorry about this. And I have five seconds left. At the end of the day, we have to think differently and we have to implement differently. And I support the things that are going on now.
We'll accept childcare interruptions during the childcare questions. So Margot Kaiser, same question. Given the city's limited budget, what programs or services will you push for related to childcare? And how will they be funded?
Thank you. So I was privy to the outside school program that mostly through Yvette, and I know she was a big part of that, I have donated, and I believe that you also can too. So if you are looking to fund these types of programs, that we don't have to rely just on city money, that's great too, and it kind of benefits everybody. I think sort of like what Will was saying, maybe we need to look at getting people involved in specific pods, families that are close already or something like that, where either there is one adult, maybe it's six to eight kids that are regularly hanging out with one another, that people feel they all have the same level of comfortability around the COVID situation and understanding what their outside lives are like too. And unfortunately, I think since we are not going back to normal life, some business owners and employers really need to look at how they can help their staff maintain a job, but also maintain their kids' normal lives, normal activity. They are our future, and that's super important. They need interaction. They need physical activity. They need mental stimulation. So that's a big one. And the funding, I don't know. I am not looking at any numbers right now or anything like that, but these are just ideas that I think we as a city can work together to try and make the most healthy decision for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Rovai.
So yeah, this is a very, very interesting subject to talk about. How are we going to get back to some sense of normalcy? You know, from all the different people I talked to and my clients, most of them are working from home. And now when school went back, they're also, you know, having their kids school from home. I know that my wife works for our school district, and she actually worked all through the summer Zooming with children to make sure that they are getting the emotional support that they needed through this really, really tough time. She was very, very surprised about the amount of students that actually attended during their summer, her little work groups. She thought she'd have two or three students, and she had closer to 17 to 20 students per age group that she hosted. So the need is out there. We can definitely leverage the Zoom to help, you know, help the kids get the support they need. As for where are we going to fund this type of thing? I mean, hopefully we'll get a vaccine in time so we can actually get the kids back to school and some sort of normalcy. We'll see when that does happen. Until then, we just need to really work together, support the teachers because they're the ones that are having to educate our kids and entertain them while we're supposed to be Zooming on for our jobs.
Thank you. All right. Second to last question here. Like many cities, Capitola City's revenue from sales tax and other areas decreased during the pandemic. If the city's budget outlook is gloomy, what programs or departments are you willing to trim? What programs or departments are you not willing to trim? And we will start with Will Rising.
That's a great question. And God, and what a tough one, right? Because we don't really want to lose everything. You always want to think things are moving in forward progress. And without having, and being candid about not having a prepared answer for this, but my immediate thought is, Miles, give me one second, pretty please. I know. Okay. My immediate thought is we have to get more creative about how to generate revenue. I think there's a lot of opportunities. One thing this time's taught me is that if you look at things in a different way and you get out of the way that we're doing things, there are many different ways to kind of get to your end result and get to your outcome. So right now, that's, we've relied on that for tax revenue. It's, you know, substantiates. I guess I'm, I don't know the exact number percent or percentage or majority of what that is, but it's substantial, I know. So we have to think about creative ways to generate new revenue. And, you know, without, as I said, having a prepared answer, I've seen proof of that in this time and how everyone's been able to transition. I'm confident that as like a community and a city council, we can come up with different ideas to generate revenue there. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Just a question again. If the city's budget outlook is gloomy, what programs or departments are you willing to trim? What programs or departments are you not willing to trim? Kristen Peterson.
Sure. Should I wait for the previous timer to run down?
It's being reset.
All right. Yeah, that's a really difficult question. And I'll be honest, I'm not sure that I can give you a straight answer on that because we've already been, you know, I personally have already been through it as one of the five council members that had to consider how we were going to balance, or rather, how we were going to make our budget work with a $4.5 million shortfall that we were facing in this fiscal year. I can't say here's the programs or areas that I'm willing to cut. Here's the ones that I'm not. I think that, you know, this comes down to labor negotiations. It comes down to discretionary expenditure. So for example, this year, we had to cut our entire community grants program, which is not something that I enjoyed doing or was happy to have to do. And if anything, I'm hopeful that in the coming, in the next fiscal year's budget, we'll be able to begin to rebuild that. Because, you know, right now, we are seeing that there was a massive drop in our TOT and sales tax, but it's starting to recover slowly but surely. And so I don't think the question, and apologies for kind of not necessarily giving you a straight answer, but I don't think the question would be, what are we willing to cut and what are we not? But how do we build back up from where we are now? And if things get worse than this, then I think we're going to need to start looking even further into dipping into our general fund or our reserves.
Okay. Thank you. Anthony Rovai.
Well, yeah, that's a super tough question. No one ever wants to have to make these super tough decisions. For me though, I mean, the basic things that we really need as a city is all the safety issues. We need to have a police department. We need to support our public works department. And those two, as a minimum, is what we need the city to keep. Because if we don't have a safe and clean city, who's going to want to come and visit to increase the TOT tax and spend their money? So, I mean, just on a basic level, those are the two areas. It's, you know, health and safety. That's what we need to support now through here. And as the budget gets better, then we'll expand, you know, and expand as fast as we possibly can to bring more services to the citizens of Capitola.
Thank you. All right. We've got next. Margot Kaiser.
Thank you. Yeah, this, like everybody has stated, what a tough question this is. It's really hard to just nitpick one area here and there. I think you need to look at everything as a whole within that area, whether it's, you know, safety, city works, anything like that. Those are two very important areas. We did do a lot of cutbacks already, like the community stuff, a lot of the Meals on Wheels, things like that. So those are things that I would like to see brought back. I do feel like we are going to enter an uptick. I do personally want to see that the bettering of the economy here. This also goes back to supporting local business and spending your money here so that that can help go back into your community and that we can start to thrive more on our own and maybe not have to survive so much on tourism that obviously it's great, we need it, but to be more self-sustainable so that if something like COVID came back and hit us again, we have a better framework to work from. Yeah, I mean, I am not in the position right now to say, and you're gone, and you're gone, and you're back, and you're back, or anything like that. I just know that people are still working really hard with pay cuts and everything like that. And I thank them for that. And that's it.
Great. Thank you for that. Okay, we've got closing statements. I just want all the candidates to talk about anything, any other policy positions they have that you think the voters should know, one. And two, just if you were trying to differentiate yourselves from the candidates, please do that. Or anything else you wanted to expand on. And we'll start with Anthony Rovai.
Jeez, thank you. Well, I'm just going to close out and be nice and short and sweet here. You know, COVID has brought on some, you know, challenging times and tough decisions lie ahead. So, you know, as a businessman, I know how to make the tough decisions by running my companies. And if you share my love of Capitola, like balanced budgets and want to keep Capitola special, I'd appreciate your vote.
Great. Thank you. Margot Kaiser, closing statement.
Thank you. Yeah, so if you've seen any of my signs around town, it says, "Community first." And that's really what I want to put out there. I want the community vibe. We are so lucky to live here and thrive in this small, beautiful community. I realize we want to keep it quaint and we want to keep it sort of where it's at, but we do, we're obviously seeing here that we do need to progress and expand in ways that are going to be helpful for us. And I want to be a part of that. I want to be a part of the bounce back of COVID. I want small businesses to feel supported. And we're just going to have to get creative. As I did for my own business, we're just going to have to help people get creative together, team up as businesses and as a community. And I want, I want to be that person that people can come to, and I want to help. And yeah, that's why I stood up to this position. And I hope that I can help with your vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Will Rising.
Thank you, and I'll try to keep this concise. A lot of the same things though, themes. I, you know, I have a deep love for the community. I grew up here. I've, you know, every phase of life I've got to spend here and see. And I truly think it's a unique and beautiful place and worth preserving. With that, I also believe we're in a time of change, where it's going to require a tremendous amount of creative, out-of-the-box thinking. My differentiators, I think, are along those lines, right? You know, in this time span, I've started two businesses that are both adapting to the circumstances and that are actually, you know, that are doing well, and they're doing what they were supposed to do, which is kind of be multifunctional, stimulate local business as well as kind of, you know, meet the needs of the current circumstances. In my, in my career history, you know, I went to school for computer science. I've worked for, you know, IBM, Oracle, you know, VMware, now Google. All of my training has been about how to build things at scale, how to be inclusive, how to be mindful of your environment, how to be self-sustaining. Without even knowing it, this is the environment, you know, thinking about it, this is the environment that I've conducted my career and been, you know, reasonably successful in doing that. So I feel like I have a unique skill set in helping change occur and also being mindful of how it's going to impact the environment and the things around it. I have a track record of that. I would love to be able to leverage that for my home community in my town to preserve the things that I think are so wonderful about it. So that's why I'm here, and that's why I think I might be able to offer something helpful there.
Thank you. Thank you. Kristen Peterson, closing statements.
Sure. In the last four years, I've really found a lot of joy in being on Capitola City Council. I've met with numerous residents and business groups and community organizations. I have learned so much from where I was four years ago. And I can only imagine that if I have the honor to be reelected, that I will learn so much more in the next four years. As I mentioned, my family's been here for four generations. My grandfather worked for Capitola PD for nearly 30 years. I feel that it's my responsibility to give back to this community in one way or another. And I would be honored to have the vote of our residents to be able to continue to give back to the community in this way. And if anyone watching now feels that I can do better or there's ways that we can do better as a council or things that we can do to improve our city, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'm always open to suggestions and conversation and collaboration. And with that, just thank you so much for tuning into this forum tonight. And as I say at the end of every meeting, please take care of yourselves and take care of each other.
Terrific. Thank you, Kristen. I want to thank all the candidates for coming. I want to thank the Santa Cruz local members for making this happen and as well as the Chamber of Commerce. Quick plug for Santa Cruz Local. Please consider supporting local news with a Santa Cruz Local membership. Information is at santa cruz local.org/membership. There's also a free newsletter. You can sign up at santa cruz local.org. That gets free news, local news in your inbox two to three times a week. You can read a transcript of this forum and you can see a video of it. And it's Santa Cruz Local's Elections Guide. That's at santa cruz local.org/elections. Lastly, we want to invite you to our final candidate forum this week. That's at 6:00 PM Thursday. That's for County Board of Supervisors, District One. And you can register for that at santa cruz local.org/events. Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate it. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great to see everyone.
Thanks for hosting.
Good night, guys.